I'm going to reconvene the board meeting at this time, 10:24 in the morning. And we're going to reconvene with item 7.4, and then we will go to 7.3.
Good morning. Sue, the board earlier this year wanted to start a process and a new policy on naming facilities. And you had tasked me earlier this year to create a process. We, over several different meetings, goal-setting and board meetings, created a process which the board would instruct the county administrator to work with staff to come with some ideas of naming a building. So last week, you had instructed me to come back with some names for the children and families building. The following names have been submitted, and I want to thank staff for also sending some names along, and also some things. So I'm going to list them. They are also in the packet, and we can open this up for discussion. Dr. Helen Gilkey, Daniel Rayfield, and Barbara Ross. We can go into their bios if it would be helpful, and I could read them to you. Also, Louis Alexander Southworth. Other possible names are not necessarily people. Now, I'm going to, this is going to be tough on me for the second one I mean to, but Dunwali, is that correct? Dunwali?
I've heard it pronounced a couple of different ways. Dunawi?
Dunawi. And it's a creek that runs nearby. It's just south of Starker Park. It is the Kalapulia name for female elders. And then Click Attack? Click Attack? Would that be right? Building Benton County was created out of lands originally inhabited by the Click Attack, who rented it from the Kalapulia for use of hunting grounds. The name pairs nicely with our building here, the Kalapulia Building. And then the Sunrise Building, Sunrise Center, and the name pairs with the adjacent Sunset Building. Sunrise has positive connotations in relation to children and mental health. It can also be looked at as a fresh start, new light after a period of darkness. And from there, I'd like to open it up to discussion. My responsibility was to present some names. I hope you find this list for a good conversation.
Thank you. Really appreciate the suggestions. And I'll open the floor to discussion among my fellow commissioners.
I appreciate the, well, one, updating, revising the naming policy before we started this process, and then coming up with a list of choices. I guess, since I started this process several months ago, I feel like it would be appropriate to name the 4185 Southwest Research Way Building, which is our Children and Families Services Building currently, after Representative Dan Rayfield, who, well, the state legislature has allocated funds for a long time, but Benton County didn't really get our share most of the time. And since Representative Rayfield's been in office, he's done a great job. One of quickly rising to a position of leadership in the Oregon Legislature, or in the Oregon House, and used his leadership position to advance legislation that has benefited all of Oregonians. And he listened to his Benton County constituents and got state dollars to fund a number of facilities. And I'll make a short list, but he's helped when the courthouse, our new courthouse, got some inflation, and the state's 50% needed to be added to, I know, in one of those, he was instrumental in getting, I think, about $8 million of additional OJD funds, so that the state, 50%, was actually 50%. The Mental Health Crisis Center there on Fourth and Van Buren, that you can now see above the fence, and will be open next spring. He secured the majority of the funding for that facility. Another legislative session, he got $5 million to help fund our Emergency Operations Center out on our site that will have our courthouse. And that facility was in May of '23 bond that was not successful, but we have, we have a plan and are moving forward with it with help from our friends. And in the last session, well, in the last session, he got $2.5 million to support housing and homeless projects. That, just after our last conversation about housing challenges in Benton County, will be put to good use. And then last year, also got $5 million for the children and families building, previously mentioned 4185. And that was, so we were able to purchase the building and remodel it, and it is in operation since last April. And I see April nodding her head. And so for seven or eight months, we've had, been in operation but haven't had a name for it. And so I would propose naming it after former Representative Dan Rayfield. And I think the timing is good. We need a name, and he is transitioning from a local state rep to statewide office of Attorney General, so.
Commissioner Wise?
Well, for the, I, we, I don't really have anything new to say, other than the comments. To just reiterate my comments from last meeting, I prefer not to name buildings after people who are still alive. I'd prefer to name them, if we are going to name it after a person that they have been deceased. I like the idea of naming it after Barbara Ross. I'm, I'm thankful, I think Jesse Ott gave us the idea of Dr. Helen Gilkey. I think that might be a good name if we were to, you know, redo our Jackson Fraser Boardwalk and have some sort of memorial for her there. Might be more appropriate. I very much appreciate all of Dan Rayfield's contributions to our community. As I said, I prefer not to name buildings after people who are still alive. I like Click Attack Building, because it does, as it says in here, it does complement or pair nicely with Kalapulia. The idea of Sunrise, Sunset, I like that, but it might be kind of confusing if someone hasn't been to either of the buildings, and they're coming by. So for me, I would either advocate for Click Attack or for Barbara Ross.
I know that Click Attack was in the list of names for this building, but I also recall that we went through a process where we consulted with the tribes, and that was not one of their first choices. So I'm a little hesitant about using the Click Attack name, because the Kalapulia members of the Confederate tribes of Grand Ronde were not supportive. So I would, I would, out of these names personally, prefer either Barbara Ross, and have it be the Ross Child and Family Mental Health Center, or something like that, or Sunrise, either one of those.
Thank you for sharing the information about the Confederate tribes not sharing the Click Attack or being supportive. I was not aware of that. I guess I was just operating on the assumption that since it made it on this list, that it was one of the ones that was supported. So I will remove my support for Click Attack, and I will, I would support naming it after Barbara Ross.
I also would love to know if there's a staff preference in terms of the staff that will be working in the building. You know, it is our prerogative, but would welcome input from staff as well.
That's fine. We just wanted you to also know that Barbara Ross does have a building named after her in Salem. Just so you know, it is a state office building as well. So, and the building is still, talks about the function of the building, and I think that that's a discussion we may want to remember for folks, because it's, from a wayfaring standpoint, you know, people need to be able to drive down Technology Drive or over, and be able to identify what services are available in that building. In all due respect to all the folks that work at it, we want to probably take on a project next year and work on our signage and wayfaring for folks who are trying to navigate through Corvallis to all our different services and buildings.
And in that regard, I'm familiar with the building in the, at the state Capitol. It doesn't get referred to as the Ross Building. It's, I think, Public Service Building. I'm in and out of there for meetings on a regular basis, and there's no signage that commemorates it. So it's, it's, at least that I've seen. So it, I would, I don't have any hesitation about naming a building for Barbara Ross here in the community. I think the building needs a name, other than just the Children and Families Mental Health Center, because of the fact that there are other tenants. I don't know when that might change, but you know, I don't necessarily think everyone wants, the other tenants, they want to have to say that they're in the county's Children and Family Mental Health Building. So it, I think it's useful to have that other name for wayfaring for, for non-county folks as well. So better signage, for sure. It really helps to know which offices are in those buildings. Again, more thoughts?
Well, I think the other piece of this conversation is, as was mentioned before, we have, we will be having multiple other new buildings. And I wonder if it might, I know we've already embarked on this conversation, but I just wonder if it might be easier to wait until we are naming the new buildings and sort of consider them all at once, and that way just have a more comprehensive view.
Platform, portfolio. On the other hand, this building's in use, and I concur with Commissioner Malone, that it's been several months already, and it would be nice to have a name. But I hear what you're saying.
I have talked to Paul Walsinger, and there is, I think, plans and availability for space for more than one name, I think already available, so it can have a name and then a function.
Or multiple functions.
Couple ways of identifying our buildings.
So I guess for clarification, would, would, would this be the such-and-such Children and Families Mental Health Building? Is that what we'd like, the Dan Rayfield or the Barbara Ross?
I think it would be the Barbara Ross Building, and then they would have several functions in it. One of them would be the Children and Families Mental Health Center, and then the others would be those tenants that are in the building. Okay. That's the way we do it here for Kalapulia with all, with the signage out front as well.
Well, I think we will have other, fortunately, we will have other buildings to name. And for the reasons that I stated, I think this is, for this particular building, I think it's very appropriate to name after Representative Rayfield, because, because of his ability to get state dollars to fund the purchase and renovation of the building.
And we can make the same argument for the Emergency Operations Center or for the Crisis Respite Center. So I don't think that it's necessarily urgent to name a building for Speaker Rayfield. Acknowledging him, most certainly. He's been incredibly supportive of the county, very helpful.
I guess I would feel more comfortable naming the Emergency Operations Center after him. I know that's not what we're deciding today, but. I'll just note too, sorry, Pat, we did get some emails from a handful of community members, and there were a couple, three or four, that were supportive of Barbara Ross. We got one that said, why do you even need to give it name-name? Just name it after its function. And then I did not receive any, or I did not see any that were in support of Dan Rayfield.
Likewise, and I was kind of surprised by the organic nature of the interest in naming a building after Barbara Ross from the community. I probably received about five different messages myself.
I think that's because our last discussion was on the front page of the GD.
But it didn't mention Barbara Ross's name. We didn't mention in that, in that discussion.
I moved to name the county-owned building located at 4185 Southwest Research Way as the Barbara Ross Building.
Second. All in favor? Please signify with an aye.
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 Nate?
Thank you. Motion passes two to one. I know that there'll be plenty of other facilities to be named in the coming year or two, and I wish you all best of luck in naming those. And we will, in the community, all celebrate whichever way you choose to go. Okay, we're going to move to item 7.3 at this time, fees for land use and planning division services provided by Community Development Department. No, no. In front of you.
Good morning. Petra Sheets, interim Community Development Director. This item, this morning, is the annual adjustment of the planning fees to become effective January 1 of 2025. And this year, we went through a process where we had a conservative inflation factor of 2.1 across the board. So the only really notable or interesting item about this is that for next year, we do plan to have a much more integrated approach to the fees for the county by working more with finance and having more centralized methodology. So that's something to look forward to for next year. But for this year, we just decided to do a conservative inflation.
Any questions? So that, that further process for next year, that's what's memorialized in the order in the second paragraph, as I understand it? The second paragraph states that Benton County Community Development shall consider annual incremental fees, fee increases in the amount of 5% or the Western Region CPI plus 2%, whichever is greater. So is that what you're referring to?
That, that's how we've traditionally done it. But what I'm suggesting is that moving forward, we're going to be working with Greg Mun on basically an internal project to, so right now, the plan, or the Community Development Department inputs the fees for the entire county, and we'd like to have a more integrated process with a more comprehensive methodology across the board, and working more closely with Finance Department on how to do that.
Okay.
So moving forward, we'll just have a different process.
Okay. So this order does not sound accurate, then, to the process that, that Community Development and Finance are envisioning. But this be it further ordered does not seem appropriate. And I'm looking at County Council.
Yeah, one thing about that last paragraph is there's no time limit. I think, I understand, Petra, she's talking about 2025. This would appear to go on annually. There is nothing that would prevent a Community Development and Finance from working together to put forward a proposal next year that is CPI plus 2%. There's, there's nothing to prevent that. I think really what it boils down to is being able to justify cost increases at the next go-round. So I'm not sure this is necessary.
But what I'm understanding is that the review methodology is very different from CPI plus 2%. And what's memorialized in this order is CPI plus 2%.
Yes, there's nothing about methodology in this last paragraph.
This is the current methodology. I was just suggesting that moving forward, we plan to take a different approach.
Agreed. And I just am uncomfortable about memorializing the past approach in an order that's looking forward. But if no one else is concerned about it, I'm fine.
I mean, we can ask it to, is there a time crunch on this? Can we have it, can we reconsider it at our next meeting?
We have no next meeting before January 1st, when these fees go into effect. So.
Then would we just make the effective date a different date?
I think.
Effective date is an internal, is an internal date. That's just done annually. I don't think, there's no legal precedent or anything of that nature, but it is an operational efficiency, because the fees do need to go into the software at the same time, so that they can be comprehensively put together and operationally.
Sure. It doesn't really, it doesn't matter to me. I was just trying to be cognizant of your feelings on that, so.
I, you know, I don't think it's an accurate statement in this order, but I'm fine, you know, if the, if the two of you, if everyone else is fine with it, and we go ahead with a deeper dive and do it based on different methodology, that's fine. Just will be in conflict with the order.
But it would, I assume, we'll spend the next year trying to integrate the fee schedule, and I can see you coming back a year from now or, or less with, with a, a new approach. Is that accurate? Is that accurate?
Yeah, maybe we complicated things by saying what we're going to do in the future. But yeah, so each of the departments have a different methodology for their fees. And I guess what I was trying to express was that we would like to improve on that by working with the new CFO moving forward. So we didn't want to change what we've currently been doing this year and that's why we made a simple approach, which was just applying the simple inflation factor conservatively.
So the, the question before us today is just to approve the fees with a note that you all will be working on it more in the future.
Correct. So, sorry, the wording was confusing.
So just two things real quick. Number one, the, the timing. Community Development, Public Works and Environmental Health roll their fees on all January 1st so that contractors, members of the community are aware of the new fees. So I think that is where the time crunch is, Commissioner Wise. Not really a crunch, but it's, it's a synchronization.
Yeah.
Second, I'm not sure this last paragraph is necessary. If it's not in the order, there's nothing to prevent Community Development and Finance from tackling fees for 2020, I guess it would be 2026. However you wish to do so. And then again, as I said earlier, then it's just a matter of presenting it to the newborn and justify the request.
Yeah.
So at this juncture, probably, and correct me if I'm wrong, Petra, the most important push is to make sure your fees that are going to be changed are in place January.
Correct. And i- if there's a major concern about that, we're comfortable as well, we, we talked about this is not increasing the fees at all until we went through a new methodology.
No, no. I think that need to increase the fees and they need to be done on a timely basis. But I do think that it might be smart to just strike that last paragraph because it refers to an approach that is not going to be taken for next year.
Would you like to, I mean, the chair technically can make a motion if you'd like to make one last motion for, you know?
Either that or I can suggest a motion. I well, I would move to adopt order number D24-060, revising fees for county land use and planning division services effective January 1st, 2025. With one change to the order, that is to strike the last paragraph, starting with be it further ordered.
Second.
All in favor, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that. I'm so used to waiting for someone else's second. Thank you and sorry for the confusion.
I do have one question that is sort of related, sort of not related. And it's under the appeals and just so that I'm understanding it correctly. In the past, when we increased the application fee for the landfill application, CUP, it had the effect of making an appeal cost that same amount, which I believe Community Development worked on. So I see that it's the actual cost with a $5,000 deposit. Do you foresee, I mean, I'm not, if you can't answer this question, that's okay. Do we expect it to cost $5,000? Do we expect it to cost more than $5,000 if someone were to appeal a decision on the landfill?
Yes.
Expansion, okay. Do you, do we have, do we expect it to be more in that $10,000 range or? And the only reason I bring this up is just because we've had a lot of community members interested in this question.
Appeal only, far exceed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, next item is Public Health Update with Sarah Hartstein. Our newly minted Public Health Director.
Good morning, thank you. It's so good to see you all and I wish I had a motion for you, Commissioner Ogierow, but I don't. It's just a quick update. As you know, we are in respiratory season, so I'm going to take a quick stop here and provide you with an update on where we're at in Oregon. This is a graph of weekly emergency department visits by viral respiratory illness type. The top orange line is COVID-19. The blue line is flu and then the bottom line is RSV. We use, just as a reminder, emergency room tracking because it provides a snapshot of activity for us and it's more representative of the full population in comparison to hospital beds, for example. Overall, if you look at the bottom right, on the week ending of December 7th, we saw 2.5% of ED visits for either COVID-19, flu or RSV. You can see that there's a bit of an uptick in Oregon at the moment with the flu, the blue line representing 1.8% of ED visits. We continue to promote and encourage seasonal respiratory illness vaccines. So the fall COVID-19 booster along with the flu and RSV. When, when I was here providing an update to you last in October, Benton County was about at a 7% uptake for the COVID booster and currently we're at 15%. So we're, we're, we're trailing only behind Multnomah County in Oregon for, for vaccine uptake for COVID booster. What I would really like to talk with you about today is pertussis or whooping cough. We're seeing, we're, we are seeing the highest rate of pertussis since 2012 in Oregon. We are currently at 948 cases in all of Oregon. Locally in Benton County, we have 15 cases, which doesn't sound like a lot, but we, we, that is more, more than we usually see here locally. We expect to see cyclical increases with pertussis, but this is something that we want to try to get out in front of. As a reminder, this is a highly contagious disease caused by a bacteria. It's spread by droplets from coughing and sneezing and it is vaccine preventable. This graph that we see here, this is 2024 on the right hand of the screen in comparison to 2023. In 2023 in Oregon, we had 40 cases of pertussis. And at least as of December 12th in Oregon, we have 948.
Can I ask you, do we know the age profile of those pertussis cases and are they all in young kids that haven't been vaccinated or is it all ages?
I don't have the age breakdown for all of Oregon. In, in Benton County, we're seeing young, younger adults. And some younger ages as well, but I can get that information for you. Work with our Communical Disease Team to pull that information. After exposure to someone who has pertussis, symptoms usually appear five to 10 days. Initially, it'll be cold-like symptoms during the first one to two weeks and then may progress to rapid, violent and uncontrolled coughing fits. And this can occur from one to six weeks. It's called whooping cough because there is this high pitched whoop when inhaling after a coughing fit. If you've ever heard it, it's not a nice sound or if you've experienced it, it does not feel good. It, it, for babies, it's very hard for them to eat, drink or breathe. And with young children, the, the cough isn't always there. Sometimes it's apnea or they'll stop breathing because they can't, they can't cough or they don't have that whoop sound. Hard time catching breath, may throw up after coughing because it's so intense and/or lose color in the face because it's hard to bring in air. Newborns and young children are most at risk because they haven't had the opportunity to have the full vaccine series. And again, as I mentioned, not all babies whoop or cough. Sometimes it's just a difficulty of breathing or apnea, stopping breathing. Serious complications are common in babies and children who haven't had all the recommended doses of the vaccine. About one in three babies younger than one who get pertussis need care in a hospital. And the younger the baby, the more likely they'll need hospital treatment. And so this is really something that we want to avoid and that can be avoided through vaccination. It is recommended DTAP or Diptheria Tetanus and Pertussis, it's a combined vaccine, is recommended for children at two, four, six and between 15 to 18 months of age. And then again, between four and kindergarten age. And then it is also recommended for the booster to occur between 11 to 12 years of age. And then for adults every 10 years and because immunity does wear off. Pregnant persons should consult with their healthcare provider about getting a T-DAP booster in their third trimester of each protect, of each pregnancy because newborn babies are unable to receive the vaccine and there is some transfer of that protection. We also recommend that we, we wrap newborns in care through encouraging not just the pregnant person, but people in the household, anybody who's going to be providing care to the infant, grandparents, aunt, uncles, other caregivers to also get the booster or vaccinated for the first time if they haven't already. Because it then protects the, the young children who haven't been able to get the full vaccine series. Other prevention measures are similar to other communicable disease illnesses that, that we see during this season. So cover your cough, wear a mask, wash hands. Do, do your best to keep infants away from people who are sick or coughing. If an individual does have pertussis, seek antibiotic treatment early. Within two weeks of cough onset is most effective. And they also recommend individuals with close contact, who have had close contact with someone with pertussis to have PEP or antibiotics before even symptoms occur. And then of course, individuals are recommended to, to stay away from others or isolate until five days after they've started antibiotics. This is a illness where children will be excluded from school. And so that's also something that we want to avoid as well. Learning is important, connection is important. And so it's, it's another reason to ensure that we're seeking out vaccinations. Our health communications team has done a great job working with our Communical Disease Team to put health advisories together for providers, licensed daycares and schools. We're putting this information in our Benton Health Newsletter, promoting it through Facebook and then we've been, or other, and other social media sites. And we've also been brainstorming other local sources to get this information out such as mom magazines and some of the other sources that we promote other, other vaccines.
Thank you. Questions?
Yeah, Sarah, do you have an idea what the current percent vaccinated for pertussis is in Oregon or nationwide and maybe what it used to be and what, what should we be aiming for?
I can get those specific percentages for you, but this is the question that people are asking is, why are we seeing this now? In Oregon and one of the, one of the reasons is that because we are seeing people feel a little bit more hesitant about vaccines. There was also this period of the pandemic when we had the vaccine schedules adjusted. Not intentionally, but folks were not able to get in for care to get, get their regularly scheduled vaccines. And so those are some of the reasons. I would love to pull that information for you and get back to you with that, along with the age breakdown of the pertussis cases in Oregon.
Cause I, I know there's a recommended percentage of the population that if they're vaccinated, that we're in pretty good shape, that it tends to be isolated incidents rather than moving through the classroom or the office or wherever it's moving through. But is it accurate that we've? I'm trying to remember how long the vaccine's been available and we had three or four good decades or maybe more and then kind of relax, oh, we, we don't have to do that anymore because it's not around. And, and so kind of relax and, and take for granted the low rate and the low rate was because we had a high vaccination rate.
I love to hear you talking about herd immunity. So, so thank you for that and and you're right, right? If, if we, if, if the more folks that are vaccinated, the less the opportunity the disease has to spread. And so I'll get you the current numbers for that in a response.
I just wanted to make sure I had the right concepts of how this works.
You do, yeah. You, yeah, you do.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing this. It's very important information, scary but important. And if people don't know how big of a deal is, then they might not be motivated to go get their vaccines and have their babies vaccinated. I know, as you said, there's been some vaccine hesitancy lately. And I would just say for anyone that's hesitant on this vaccine, if you Google pertussis and, and look on YouTube for videos of babies with this, it is heartbreaking and terrifying. And when I had my babies, this was one of the top things I was scared of. It's, it's not a joke. So thank you for coming and sharing this information.
Thank you. Thank you. We will then move on to Health Services Structure Status Report with April Holland and Lacey Molle. And I don't know, Rick is joining them also, yes.
Thanks, Commissioners. I'm going to sort of kick this off, but probably bounce back and forth between Lacey and April as we provide an update. And just as a bit of a background, and this is of course all referred to you in the memorandum as part of your packet, but this is follow back to our June 18th recommendation, as you recall, and in our work around the Health Services Reorganization. At that time, we were focusing on revisiting the previous recommendation, which was to combine into one department. And the recommendation and approval by you was to maintain the current or the structure that we've had as two departments, but adopt a much more I guess containment approach around health services and working together. And within that, we outlined five main focus areas to really look at. And again, I'll kind of go in from a summary standpoint and allow Lacey and April to expand. But first and foremost, we were looking at really looking at our health business office, as we like to call it. And this has been sort of an ongoing conversation of area that floated between both the Health Department and the CHC and maybe a more efficient and effective way to address that. Second, which is one of the bigger areas of the reorganization. Second, which is one of the bigger areas of the reorganization, was to reevaluate our behavioral health division. Again, this longtime history on this and in relation to that particular service, really falling on both sides of each department and trying to, again, understand, is there maybe a more effective way to deliver those services as well as be efficient within the operations themselves? The next three areas were really, as I like to say, is kind of looking more from just a global standpoint of are there program and service areas that we need to determine if there's some recalibration that needs to be done? Is there duplication going on? Is there, again, better ways that we can maybe consider delivering those services? Are there areas where maybe we need more capacity? And that, of course, then rolls into a focus area number four and five, which I like to call kind of the foundation of all of this work. We need to really look at our span of controls within the health service. This is a big area. Let's not let's, I mean, again, I always like to say this 50% of the county's budget or 50% of the county's staff, I should I should say. And and I think we really need to spend a lot of time understanding, do we have the right management structures in place? I think it's fair to say that in some cases we don't. We have supervisors that are have a huge span of control in terms of the number of staff that they provide supervision to. Clearly, there is areas where we find some inequity relation to our different division managers, middle managers, office managers, all the different terms that are used. So really trying to reevaluate that and then also taking it down to our positions as well. And again, the two of these folks can talk a little bit more about this, but really look deeper into our position. So all of these things are kind of the core areas that we have really been working on to try to address here within the timeframe that we established. And I guess I'll speak to that. We obviously had planned on coming back to you at the end of October with the idea of the restructure moving forward. Clearly, there were some unanticipated events that we had to address that created some delay in that. At the same time, at the moment that we were presenting to you, we hadn't, we had interim leaders in place. I'm happy to say I have two permanent leaders here to my left and right now. But they, of course, had to then fill in behind themselves. And you just got to see one of the leaders that that she was able to move forward with our public health directors, who's doing a great job. And again, it has ripple effect, obviously, as you hire those. And and as always, hiring, it takes a while. And if we want to do it well, we want to do it right. And so we've spent a lot of time on that as well. I'm not trying to sit here and make excuses. This is just a lot of work. And we do think we have made some progress, but I can't sit here in front of you today and say, hey, we're all done, all wrapped up. And this is going to be clearly some things that we we need to continue to work on. But I still feel very proud of what we've accomplished to this point. So in the memorandum, it goes through each of the focus areas. And again, we'll start with the restructuring and realigning of the business office. And I'll turn it over to to whomever wants to get started on that. But this has been, again, an area that I have been involved in in my previous capacity as CFO and really trying to figure out what is the best and most effective way to do the business functions within the health service area. And I think you all know, we successfully did a reorganization of financial services and we addressed some of those. And that was a step forward. And again, feel good about that. But there were still, I think, some uniquenesses. I've learned a lot in three years. I'm sure Greg will learn more now as he comes in and has his ideas in terms of moving forward. But I think this becomes, in my mind, sort of that next iteration. So with that, I'll turn it to left or right, whoever would like to dive into that.
I'll take this one. Are you okay with that?
Well, if I could just, I just want to provide a little more on the overarching piece. But yes, please take the first one. I just wanted to to share that a lot of the work that we've been undertaking together, stability is at the core of all of it, right? In the Health Department, we haven't had a permanent leader since 2019. It's the end of 2024 now. I took the permanent position in mid-July. Lacey was also in a in a experiences series of leadership changes in the CHCs. So as we look to stability and what's possible in terms of change, it's 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 limited when you're in an interim position and you're learning and and doing a couple of jobs at once. And so this is this is newer work that we're undertaking with the full positions in front of us. And I'll just say that the stability sort of components, yes, it involves structure and understanding, you know, what's needed to provide the support needed for services and for people. There's also a huge financial component, and that's something that you'll hear more about today. And I think at a foundation is is culture, right? We can't do any of this work without extensive and thoughtful culture change. So while you'll see in these five elements of of review and adjustment, a lot of progress. At least to me, what's become evident is the long road that that we are on in health services to affect culture change and and to really to really get where we'd like to go.
Yeah, I can't reiterate that more. I think we tried to incorporate that into the text that we wrote and also kind of in our final statement around, you know, that's really the core of the work that we're doing. I also want to say and recognize that while we still feel new in our permanency, we really want to thank you all, Rachel, Rick, and you Commissioners, as well as the CHC Board for recognizing the need for us to move into permanency in order to move this big work forward. So just thank you all for hearing us along the way and providing that for us. But kind of to touch on focus area one with the restructuring of the Health Business Office and the work that was done when Rick came in and merged the two houses of Health Finance and County Finance. We have learned a lot since then. Rick spent a lot of time diving in and learning about CHC finance that I don't think he ever imagined he would do, revenue cycle things. Debbie did the same as she stepped in when Rick stepped into this role. And Greg has verbally committed to doing the same thing. And so I'm really excited to have a partner with Greg coming on board. I said when I first interviewed and I said it to Rick and I said it to Debbie, your best friend has to be the CFO. That's the first friend you make at work. April's my second best friend. So, okay. And then, right, anyways, we won't get in line here. But so that relationship is just really key. But through the process, we have realized that we need to figure out that Fund 515, which is where those Operation Health Management Services has previously lived. And we would, we are moving forward with a structure that will allow for a Health Services Business Operations Division. And the revenue cycle and compliance areas will both report up into that area, which then allows our quality programs and our compliance with our programs to all report into one area that's equally responsive to both the Health Department and the CHC side. The financial activities like budget management, revenue analysis, all of those areas will remain with the Finance Department and hopefully bolstered by an additional analyst position to support the other Health Services analyst position, because we know that it's just, it is a lot of work. We have a lot of grants that are funding both programs and a lot of compliance for reporting in that way. So and we also learned through the budget reshoot that that those roles, the analyst roles, are actually just hugely integral to our ability to be successful. So this would develop a new kind of division or director position that would that we're in the process of taking forward to Human Resources for review right now.
And I'll just add on before I move to focus area two is that I think, again, history for the Commissioners, as you might remember, we started this journey with two CFOs in the county. You had one in the Health CHC, you had the county CFO. We merged to a place of a Health Financial Officer. That is part of the financial services that also brought the revenue cycle component with it. That's where we've been. And now what we're saying is that the financial elements does belong within financial services and we need to continue to place those. But clearly, the revenue cycle is very, very specialized. And I think it's most effectively integrated into a Health Business Office. So I think that that's sort of the iteration over time of how we've evolved. And one last element that I've learned, I guess, through this process is that there are two other, like I call subunits, wrong with revenue cycle that also belong in this area that have been sort of areas, important areas, but sometimes they don't always connect well together. And I think this idea of the division and really creating a Health Business Office is going to create a lot of efficiencies and really be able to take us to that next level. So and I guess I'll shift to focus area number two. But I, you know, to response to Lacey's comments about best friends, I guess the moral is, is as you start going up higher in the organization, you have less best friends, is that what you're saying? So see how I rank now. So focus area number two, again, this one, it gets very deep. So Behavioral Health Division, again, I'm not going to bore you or labor all of the complexities that come with that. It is a very complicated area. It has a lot of moving parts, a very important area. As we all know, we need to be high quality delivery of services. There's a huge need in the community. And so this is an area that I think we've been a lot in research mode and really trying to understand what are our best practices? What are we seeing in Lane County? What are lessons learned? What have we seen in Lincoln County? What are some of the different things that we can take? And again, these two fine ladies have done tremendous amounts of research and looking at this. And this is an area that we're moving forward, but we're also being very cautious and and want to also have the opportunity to listen and be able to determine, you know, what are the best practices? So with that, I'll shift to April.
Thank you. So I appreciate that introduction. The Behavioral Health Division has grown incredibly and we have so much need, so much increased acuity across the board, across the continuum of of Behavioral Health Services. So Lacey and I have been engaged in conversation for several months, looking at different models across Oregon beyond, and particularly had more in-depth conversations with those four across Oregon, for entities that are co-located with co-situated with with counties and CHCs together. All are different and some really intrigued us. And what where our conversations are right now is determining how, you know, we can, Lacey put this really well earlier, how we can move from co-location to to integration of services where it makes sense and not just doing it, but to have the appropriate service agreements and financial agreements in place so that it's very clear what is being provided and and the flow of of financials, of referrals, of services along the way. There are many, I wanted to call them webs, many, many sources of of funding, incentive funding, capitated funding, that we are in the process, we are embarking upon really understanding how much we can integrate and what needs to stay distinct. I think, you know, there there are changes to state agreements coming as well. The new Oregon Health Authority, CFAA, is moving away from a service element model where it's very prescribed tit-for-tat payments to a more holistic model. So we'll need to take all of these changes, the current landscape, and understand better, you know, exactly what those financial agreements look like. We're currently, the Health Department and CHC are both benefiting in various ways. They are, they need to be defined better and have a better flow. I will say that in terms of immediate adjustments, you'll hear more about this in our numbers four and five later. But with that growth in the Behavioral Health Division has come some incredible need for change. Because the Crisis Center is front and center for us right now, we have moved forward with Human Resources and Finance to reclassify some of the crisis programs, positions, and to add a a leadership component to the crisis programs. So we'll have a lower level director, a D61 director, to oversee all of the crisis programs, including jails and forensics, the core team and the Crisis Center programs, ENCC and some some others. And then we'll have a program, a clinical manager of crisis programs, as well as an administrative manager. There are other areas across Behavioral Health that are next in line. The positions are drafted, but we would like to move forward with a couple of other program areas to right-size management based on their scope and and span of control.
I think another, which we'll get into this a little bit with focus area four and five that we've kind of smooshed together, but is not only the span of control. So we have some managers that are supervising a lot of people. We have some managers that are supporting a lot of people in fulfilling those HR components, but they're also fulfilling those really complex clinical oversight components, which really is at the core of the quality of the work that we provide to the community. So needing to create some additional layers in there or different type of management roles to really be able to support both the, you know, human resource management side of supporting our employees, but also ensuring that we have appropriate clinical oversight of the folks that are providing clinical care.
I guess the last thing I would offer is, and I want to just echo what what April said. I mean, I think we are trying to balance the need to continue to make movement forward with Behavioral Health in a way that makes sense, that's smart. But let's recognize we've got the Crisis Center coming and this has to be a priority. And and that's, you know, it's going to, it's a lift. And we are working with our human resource partners to get that all established. I think we feel really good about the plan as it relates. I really like the idea of this higher level leadership, but there's also a lot of staff we have to hire up. And we've talked to Rachel about some of her ideas and thoughts on on doing that. But the next four months are going to be, you know, pretty busy focused on the operational elements of the Crisis Center. So again, more will come in our next, our continuous reports to the Board going forward. But I think, you know, we're in a good position. So I guess now taking us to focus area number three, which is addressing duplicative programs and services. And this sort of becomes a bit of a catchall of various things. There's a variety of, again, back to health services being a huge continuum. It's got a variety of different types of programs and services. And I think, you know, there's probably things that I even mentioned on in this memorandum to where do we tweak to be a little bit more effective? And I think, you know, the first area, and I'll, I'll, we'll start with with April to kind of talk a little bit about the Homelessness Response Office. It may seem small, but it is a bigger area and growing by the day. We, you just got a housing report. And clearly, while this is, you know, focused on housing for the homeless, it is part of that continuum that Ed talked about. And we need to really be thoughtful about housing as a whole. And then, again, I know that they will speak to this. But and Commissioner Ogero, you know very well that we've been talking a lot about deflection program and how do we really get involved in our justice involved populations and be able to utilize not only that, get involved in our justice-involved populations and be able to utilize not only that program, but some of the different great funding resources that Lacey has been able to capture and really move that forward. So with that, I'll start with April since it's related to Crow, but it may shift from right to left.
Absolutely. So our Coordinated Homeless Response Office, it needs more oversight. We, I've been managing that program with the two foundational staff, as well as a contracted researcher and grant writer. And right now, we also have two limited-duration staff, one co-supervised with Sarah in public health due to their close connection with the Harm Reduction Team. We have various aspects of housing supports across health services that have an opportunity to, to be better aligned. We are still reviewing and understanding exactly what that could look like. However, it's my intention to move forward with additional oversight capacity for this office. Of course, this is a focus area of the Board of Commissioners and so highly visible. Before I turn it over to Lacey, I just want to take an opportunity to provide a small update on our goal of rehousing 51 households. As of about a week ago, 29 households have been rehoused, including 35 adults and 33 children. So that's 68 additional people living with their own roof over their heads. So this is very exciting work. There are so many components to pulling together a system of care and improving that system of care. So looking forward to the continued review of what the office looks like and what supports internally and externally can be applied.
So exciting. So kind of speaking to the 1115 waiver and, which goes all the way through to housing, targeted populations, as our CCOs and the state are trying to figure out internationally, I mean, folks are watching multiple states to see how they roll out the 1115 waiver. And then thinking about how these all intersect with our justice-involved populations, our, all of the local, you know, county jails and all are finding that they have new funding available to either help with opioid use disorder treatment in jails, which we're really excited to be working with the Benton County Sheriff Department on, as well as then now having access to health insurance for folks that are in jail coming up here over the next couple of years. So how then can we, instead of each one of our areas really kind of chasing parts of that, how can we really wrap it all around in a way that says, we have some expertise over here in medical billing? Let's see what we can do to get you guys set up to be able to do this. Could we leverage staff differently? Could we find ways to just ensure that we're really wrapping around our community and ensuring that folks are going to be as successful as possible once they re-enter into the community? As well as meeting, helping our CCOs meet their targets for really implementing the health-related social need benefits that are available to really targeted populations? How do we find them and then ensure that the benefits are equally available? So we're, if not at the CHC, if not at Behavioral Health, if not in the Health Department or the jail, we're all being approached by OHA, by our CCOs, and seeing what we can do to make sure that folks are getting the services. And we just recognize the need for real coordination over those efforts, so we're not all trying to chase our tails there.
Yeah, and if I may just finish in a couple of things. One, in terms of, as Lacey mentioned, working with the justice-involved populations. I have to tell you that this has been sort of, I don't know, a very gratifying amount of work over the last six months because, you know, the key words being, how do we collaborate? And how do we work with one another? I've been able to witness, not only working, of course, with Lacey and April, but we've been engaging with law enforcement, with the district attorney. And that has been a very rewarding experience because we are all working towards one goal here. And I think that, I feel like we can really leverage that and continue to make it grow. And this links across a lot of other countywide things that we've talked about. I know, obviously, the jail has always a conversation that comes up, but how do we work the other end of this and hopefully not go to jail or be able to prevent or intervene? So I think there's lots of opportunities there, and both Lacey and April have been huge champions in really being partners with law enforcement and trying to figure out where we can be efficient across departmental lines. The other thing I want to say in terms of the Crow, the Coordinated Homeless Response Office, that's a growing area. I mean, so it's going to get bigger. Again, I'll go back to the governor's budget. It's going to have money involved. We've seen a great deal of resources that have come through. Commissioner Malone had asked me recently, related to the Van Buren Project. I am happy to report that we are working on updates and renovation. It's not online yet, but it is acquired by the City of Corvallis and moving towards those renovations. And of course, we're going to be on the service side with our pool funding to be able to help. We're also working very closely with Corvallis Housing First in relation to their housing project. They've had a few gaps that have occurred, and so we think that there are some opportunities for us to really be a partner. That's something we'll be bringing to the board in January in relation to some steps around that. So again, some exciting opportunities. We'll shift to focus area four and five, and the techno-term user area mushed together. I like that. So we think that, you know, again, this is really kind of the foundational type work that we need to do, and I think we'll kind of probably all just address this together. You know, it started, obviously, really looking to do a deep analysis with all of our management scope and responsibilities. As I said, we've found many various areas throughout health services, and I would say there are other areas within the county as well that really need to be addressed. And so how do we more effectively identify those and staff those right from a management standpoint? There are a lot of areas that we would consider more high priority than others. We've already talked about the Crisis Center. That is certainly an area. We've talked a lot about, I don't know that we've talked today, but about children and families. I think the leader in that particular, the manager in that particular area has a huge span of control. So that will be another area that you will see us addressing from a staffing standpoint. Of course, with all this, I know Greg's behind us, and I like to say, we're always going to try to do this within a cost-neutral way and try to be able to look at the entire organization because there might be opportunities where, as I always like to say, we can permanent finance these things so that we're not creating any cost fiscal impact to the county. But at the same time, we also may need to look at other revenue sources and how are we most effectively using those? We've been working a lot with human resources on this, and one of the things you'll see here at the end in terms of the next steps, this is going to require a lot of human resources, time, and effort. We need their help. We, and Tracy knows this, and they've been a great partner, but we also know everybody needs human resources support. So trying to figure out how do we help Tracy as well, and being able to make sure that they have the capacity to help support a lot of these changes that need to be made. So again, you know, there's a lot of work that's already, again, I'll give Lacey and April a chance to talk any more specifics on that. I know they have been undertaking surveys and been working with the staff to be able to learn more about the various responsibilities and how best to align those.
Yeah, we, I think Brick just kind of covered it for the most part, and we've been talking about it as we've gone along. We have had all management in health services departments fill out a position analysis evaluation. So we heard directly from all of our managers about what they're doing, their span of control, how it's impacting their ability to really be effective leaders. That was really valuable information. We also did the same for every position inside of Health Management Services, Fund 515, as well, to really help us understand where we can centralize some of that work and find the, you know, the Venn diagram of overlaps of the work that we're doing. And just to re-highlight and focus there that we have found some areas that need intervention sooner, crisis being one, and we're excited about that, children and families being another. But, you know, all of these positions that have that dual component of management of staff and also clinical oversight, that that requires more time and a little bit less a span of control in order to do that effectively and provide good outcomes. The, I think, the, this is one area where we are really hoping, I think it needs noted because we may be coming back to you, but we were hoping that this would all be resolved in the upcoming 2527 budget. I don't know, the cost of positions, we will be, but whether or not budgets are particularly specific, or if we have to do another, I won't say reshoot because the bottom line should all get the same, but we, it may not fall in the timeline to be able to have it all wrapped up for the next budget.
I will say, our new CFO is confident, though, that we can work with him in partnership on the budget. So we're hopeful, and we want to be able to do what we can. But again, I go back to what April said earlier about just the financial streams and particularly around behavioral health, the complexities that. So, you know, before we start running off and making a bunch of proposals on how that all needs to be structured budgetarily, we want to make sure it makes sense from a service standpoint and compliance especially. So we want to be careful and very thoughtful. And I know Greg and his team will be instrumental in helping us as we move forward. So I guess, before we kind of take questions, we wanted to, you know, we'll be back. So next steps, our plan is to be back in the first quarter of 2025. Obviously, as I said earlier, a little bit of unplanned circumstances here over the last few months that had slowed some of this down. We want to, we still feel very confident in where we're at, and we wanted to be able to provide a report to you, particularly with Commissioner Ojero leaving, and certainly valuing any input that she has into this. But coming back in the first quarter of 2025 would be a priority. And to give you a little bit more specifics, again, I think my crystal ball says that, you know, the behavioral health will be a continuous work and process, but I think there's a good deal of work that we will be able to say, you know, this is, we're at, we're kind of at least a bit of a final stage. The strategic plan development gets a little more complicated. Again, you have to be able to make sure you got the right structures, it makes sense, before you can really sit down and doing some thoughtful strategic plan. I mean, I feel like there are elements of that we're doing right now, but at the same time, I think we all three would agree that, you know, that that's going to be a process, again, that is going to establish sort of that foundation for us and this new, and the new organization as we go forward. And will be probably areas that we'll continue to be discussing with you and new board member coming in in January. So with that, I guess we'd open up to any questions you have on our report.
I have just one comment and one question. At the Community Health Centers Board Meeting last night, there was great excitement on that board about the justice-involved populations work, and that was very great to see. And I know that is such a great example of the area, as you said, Rick, that spans Health Department, Community Health Centers, the justice system, the jail, the DA's office, the, you know, sheriff's office, and other partners. So I think that thinking forward about that emerging area of collaboration is also going to be important. And it's very rewarding to see. The question is about the AFSMI agreement and the re-opener for behavioral health and what role that plays in this restructuring and costing of all that we're trying to do.
It's a good question, Commissioner. So we will be embarking upon that re-opener with the new year, though it hasn't been noticed quite yet. Preparations and planning are happening. We are working on budget for what is, what is possible and what we're going to take to the table. Our human resources colleagues are looking at shift differentials and what they look like for certain types of work to help inform. We have some great examples from counties in Oregon who are doing this work. And, and so far, the budgeting seems to align well with the numbers that we see. Of course, once we get into discussions, we'll see what, where we may be able to go. And then in terms of how it may flow into, into alignment pieces, we're going to continue to determine what lines of service will have integration with community health centers and which will remain distinct. And it may be that those CMHP, you know, safety net-type services on the, on the crisis end of the spectrum may remain solely distinct. We're going to continue to have discussions to see what, what related components of service that are, that are tied to crisis, how those flow into CHC if we decide on keeping those distinct. So it's, it's all a continuum, it's all related, and so it's complex.
Definitely. Yeah, I understand. Yeah, there have to be handoffs between the systems, and it's, you can't, you can't really carve something out 100%, but yeah. Thank you.
Well, as usual, talking about the Health Department, I'm feeling a little overwhelmed. Thanks a lot. I guess the Crisis Center, and I would, when you come back after the first of the year with the updates, I'd like the, how the staffing challenges, particularly for the Crisis Center are coming, and do we have any opportunities working with the legislature for help? And, because I know this is a real challenge.
Thank you. I would, I wonder if we could come back to you with a Crisis Center-specific update rather than have it tied into our structural update sometime early in the new year? There's a lot going on. January, February. We, just in terms of ongoing planning, we're meeting very, very frequently with the core team, with Damian and Eric Bowling and others. We have an interview tomorrow with a project manager. It's, it's, it's been a bit of a process to get to this point, but we're looking forward to, to having some additional, from here to the finish line, support tying in the operational, structural, and other components to get us there.
Yeah, however you want to overwhelm us, I'll leave that up to you to figure out. I do appreciate the term span of control. Got a better handle on what that means. I remember a few meetings back, Damian Sands was talking about, and I don't remember the time period, say, 2017 or something in that range currently. The behavioral health has gone from 40 to almost 100. And, oh, and we haven't changed the administrative structure. So I know this is part of your discussion this morning, but that, I think that's a good example of why we need to look at our current structure and, well, this is what we got. we got, what, what should we have? And, oh, I'm very supportive of that effort. I think, was it Lacy, well, maybe April? One of you mentioned that Health Department hadn't had a permanent, no, it was April, hadn't had a permanent director since 2019 till last July. And I think even before you said that, I, I had a note about the challenges of COVID. And I remember some statistics, I think, our, our general vacancy factor from HR was, was running about 10% and during COVID, it was over 20%. And that, the regular staff or department heads, or we were scrambling. And I really feel like slowly but surely, we've filled positions and got some key people in, in the right place. So this is a good time to take a look at our structure and try to figure out how we can redesign things to provide better service at an affordable price.
I'm going to jump in and say, I'm really glad you're bringing the behavioral health piece back late January, early February. I think it deserves more time and attention. And the restructure overall, you'll bring back again later in the winter as well. I want to give Commissioner Wise a chance to ask any questions she may have, but acknowledge that we have two more agenda items and the need to reshuffle the room. So I'd love to get us out of here in about 15 minutes.
No question, really. I just wanted to acknowledge and thank you all for your work on this, and thank you for acknowledging that the piece about, you know, the lack of the stable leadership, I know that's tough, and you all have, had to act in acting roles, which probably is not fair to you, but you did it with grace. And it just shows your dedication to your work, your dedication to your county. And I think it, you are great leaders and you are very good role models for all, all the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to a completely different subject with an update on the Sustainable Materials Management Plan Task Force from Sean McQuire and Bailey Payne.
Well, far be it from us to keep you from a great party, so I will be brief. Mainly because you have a lot of the materials. I sent out an email last Tuesday with you overarching where we're going to be heading with the task force. And Liz Start, our Sustainable Materials Management Plan Task Force facilitator, sent out the agenda yesterday and a link for tomorrow's virtual meeting. What I wanted to do was just kind of give a broad overview and then open it up for questions that you have as we move forward. And interrupt me as, as you wish. One thing is, we wanted to start with the desired outcomes of the task force. Tomorrow's meeting is going to be far more operational, kind of setting the stage and the structure. You all were there for the kickoff on October 21st. I thought that was great. 19 of the 20 so-called members were there, you heard the presentations, the data, and then I felt really great lively conversation in the afternoon to kind of get it started. So it's going to be a next step from that, and then kind of set us up with the work for, the sub-work groups and the structure and the process. So that's what I want to highlight moving forward. I also want to start off with saying, former administrator Joe Kirby used to say, build in the plane as you fly it. We're going to be doing that. One of the things I really want to do is continue to write, kind of develop the end product as we move forward and not wait until June 20th and hey, let's write a Dickens novel. So we're going to be using our website as that warehouse, and I really want to thank Anne Thwaites, who redesigned our VOC homepage. You can find the SMMP right there at the top. So that will be, as we move forward, right now it's just the October 21st meeting, but we'll do all the sub-work groups and reports and data so the public can watch us walk through that process leading up to June 30th. So some of the highlights, you have, one of the starting points is what do we want out of this? We've identified four desired outcomes. Provide context to current sustainable materials management, I've fallen to the acronym SMM, in Northwest Oregon. List success stories and case studies. Capture current and potential resources and opportunities for our region to move forward. And lastly, identify key findings and a list of recommendations for the next initiatives where this is going. We also wanted to talk about tomorrow, some of the processes and time expectations. We have, again, many thanks to our finance department, an addendum to with our contractor. So we have anticipating three major, you know, full task force meetings as well as four or five subcommittee meetings, most of those are probably virtual. Our facilitator will have their staff be facilitating those sub-work groups as well, which is just fantastic. So they're really going to start taking the reign on the outward facing. Bailey and I meet with RRS and Liz Start every week, just to kind of make sure we're all going in the same path. We've also identified four proposed subcommittees: Food and Organics, Built Environment, Products and Packaging, and Regional Solid Waste Management. Wanted to highlight the first two, Food and Organics and Built Environment. We have the DEQ experts on both of those. You heard presentations on October 21st. They are not, they're not just on board. I mean, they're really excited to use us, not as guinea pigs necessarily, but really utilize our resources to see where they can push their initiatives forward and how DEQ wants to ultimately implement their long-range 2050 plan. The fourth one is, I guess I should say, the products and packaging is going to be a catch-all for everything else. We have RMA and other initiatives moving forward. If you have questions, I'm sure Bailey can elaborate. And then the Regional Solid Waste Management, again, looking at us as the entire region in solid waste. Just a couple of weeks ago, we know the incinerator is going to be stopping. How does that affect Metro, Gotham View, Arlington, how this whole region is working together? So not sure exactly where that goes. I think that's going to be somewhat of a different process than the other three, but it's, it's a critical reason of why we're doing this and how it's affecting. And then on the third page of the email that was sent out, or yesterday in the packet, what we want to do is have a matrix of questions that each subcommittee is answering so that we have consistent topics or how this is going to be working forward. Some of those are going to include equity and environmental justice issues, economy, all of this has a jobs and workforce impacts, success stories and case studies per topic. And then we kind of get into what are those findings or recommendations moving forward. So that way it's kind of operationally consistent, and so we can start analyzing each of these topics, which are fundamentally different, but how we approach it might be similar or where are they dissimilar. So all of this is leading up to June 30th, where, when the task force will end. And that was pretty much of an overview of what tomorrow is going to be and us moving forward. We anticipate the next full task force meeting being in late January, so we're trying to figure out when that will be best. So that was the last six months and about five minutes. Sorry if that was a little quick, but open it up to questions.
I just wanted to mention that the email memo that you sent to us was not in the packet, and I would like to please insert it into the record for the meeting.
I'll work with Erica.
Thank you. I have no questions.
Couple comments, and you mentioned the regional scope, and I think that's what's been missing from the conversation and really appreciate that we've expanded the scope and figure out who our partners are, who should be at the table, and I think that gives us a lot better chance of being successful. So.
We were hopeful that the four sub, subcommittees topics, whatever you want to call them, are broad enough to really bring in the coastal communities that were not there. Every, every county and jurisdiction in Northwest has something to do with those four. And so that was getting that regional approach to make sure we're capturing those voices as we move forward. Some may be stronger than others, but all voices are being heard.
Great. And I think the other thing that's increases our chances of being successful is having the facilitator. So I think that was a, a good move to help us move forward and kind of having, as you could say, a neutral third party driving, driving the car or the ship or whatever it is that we're driving.
Flying, driving. Yeah, we had that exact conversation internally with our team to kind of shift away from the Benton County logos and that Benton County feel to the facilitator. Once again, you commissioners are committed to this, but we don't want to have that feel like we're running the ship. So having Liz have that image and those things really took them really good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Wise, any questions?
I'll just say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we are to other, and Commissioner Wise.
Well, as we've already acknowledged, this is Commissioner Ojero's last meeting, and there's a million things that we could all say, but I think we have a video that we can watch instead. Surprise to me. I believe it's short. I don't know, I haven't seen it yet, so. Yes, the amazing, talented John Harris. Thank you.
Thank you, Zan, for, for just making me a better person. Like I touched on a minute ago, you know, she just, being Zan made me better. I wanted to learn more. I wanted to be able to, to articulate my, my thoughts, my message in a way that she did. She could convey things and do it such, in such an eloquent manner. And it didn't matter if you were in Alcee at a community group, or if you were at the, at a board of commissioners meeting, or if we were speaking to the folks at Stony Brook. She just always cared. And, and I care, but man, like she, just the, the way she shares her thoughts and what she says and how she said it, it always just stuck with, sticks with me and it's going to stick with me forever. And I feel like I'm a better person having had the opportunity to spend time with her.
Thank you, Zan, for your extraordinary efforts last year before the May 23 bond measure vote with you and Sheriff Van Arsdale doing 20, 30 meetings with different community groups to explain a fairly complicated bond measure and being articulate and patient at spokesperson for the county to the community. And so thank you for that extraordinary effort.
Thank you, Zan, for being a tireless leader and advocate to Benton County and all of our community members. Thank you, Zan, for your friendship.
Thank you, Commissioner Ojero, for your service, and I look forward to staying in touch with you, and I wish you the best as you transition into the next chapter in life.
Zan, thank you for providing such a wonderful example of what an elected official can be and should be, and, and for reflecting those values in all that you've done with and for us in Benton County.
Mom, what I'm most thankful for is you always loving me unconditionally as a mother and serving as an amazing role model for me as I go through my life, but in all areas of life, both in the way that you treat people and the way you approach your, your goals. Yeah, I think just most thankful for the way you've treated me throughout my whole life and taught me how to be a good person.
Oh, man, what I wish for Zan next is just some peace and quiet for a little while. Like I said earlier, she's got her toe in so many puddles, and I just, I want her to be able to take a break and, and enjoy her husband and enjoy her son, enjoy her family, spend some time not worrying because I, I don't think that she has it in her. And so I think she's going to take a little time off, but then I can see her getting right back into her, her activism and, and being involved in the Benton County community, the South Corvallis community. She's an amazing advocate for this, for this community, and, and losing that, that, that isn't going to be easy to replace. But I don't think we'll have to wait too long. I just don't think she has the ability not to. And so I want her to take some time, relax, and, and do some things she wants to do. And then I'm, I'm excited to get back into it with her.
Zan, what I wish for you next is taking it a little bit easier, but I hope you will still be involved in Benton County projects and efforts going forward, because I know you, you have a lot of expertise and communication skills that will, that the county needs.
Zan, what I wish for you next is whatever you want to do. If you want to relax, you relax. If you want to go take four vacations in four months, I hope you do that, too. But at some point, just know I will be calling you or texting you or emailing you because Benton County faces big issues all the time, and there's going to be times I need to like reach out and just say, hey, need a little help with this.
Zan, I wish for you all the joy that you deserve.
Zan, what I wish for you next is to have a wonderful and fulfilling next chapter in your life, whatever that looks like for you. You will truly be missed in your current role.
Zan, what I wish for you in retirement from the county is much less load on your shoulders, that you'll sleep better at night, and that we can laugh more together, because I know we will.
Congrats, Mom, on finishing up this chapter. I'm so proud of your work as a commissioner. I, you know, we haven't always agreed on, on every, like, every little thing when it comes to policy, but what I admire most about you is that, how deeply you care about serving the community and just doing whatever needs to be done to do the best job that you can. And other than that, like, I just want to thank you for being a perfect mom and for being an amazing role model for me and just making me feel better anytime I am lucky enough to be in your presence and making countless sacrifices for me, for, for my future. Yeah, I can't thank you enough. Love you very much.
Zan, it's been my pleasure to support you these last eight years. I wouldn't have had it go any other way, but I am looking forward to you being helpful.